I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Go ahead and can I get a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Also moved. Second?
Thank you, motion to approve. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Move on to opportunity for public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that wants to come on up, now would be your time to do so. All right, if not, we'll move on to Commissioner Reports. Any Commissioners have reports today?
I have a very brief one, Madam Chair. Last week, we attended the ICAP meeting, Interlegs Community Action, which is an organization that helps provide weatherization and for rental assistance and transportation. While they, ICAP does not serve Lincoln County, they have many services that overlap. We are served by IROC out of Wagner, and they do have services up here. I've been informed by our auditor that we did have one. But anyway, it was an information on how much money they have invested in the number of people they serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good morning, Madam Chair. There's road construction on Minnesota Avenue coming here to Canton. They're down to a one-lane route, which I found out the hard way this morning.
It's a chip seal, yeah.
Windshield buster.
All right, thank you for that. We've got a few minutes here before we start our public hearings. Harold, is yours quick? You want to come up?
Yeah, the item I have before you is a letter that I've signed indicating that we're going to participate in our pre-disaster mitigation plan update for this term. It's in cooperation with Minneah County and the city of Sioux Falls. It's a joint plan. When this, CCOG does this for us, and our responsibility and Minneah County's is mainly a soft match through meetings that we attend and all the cities that are involved in both counties attend to forward this plan for an update, so.
All right.
Well, being we have this plan, the cities are then eligible to apply for pre-disaster mitigation grants through peer, and those funds come from disaster declarations, 15% of which are put into a pre-disaster mitigation fund.
All right, you just need approval for signature?
Yes, I did sign it, and I believe it's forwarded on to the Commission for your approval. If, when it's approved, I'll send it to CCOG.
All right, thank you. You've heard the request.
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And then Sean, you had a short one, didn't you?
I do.
Was that number 11?
It is number 11. We had, we received one proposal for airport management services. It was from Premier Aviation LLC, which was opened and read as advertised at 10:15 a.m. on 7:15. And what I'm requesting today is to award the airport management position to Premier Aviation LLC and authorize the state's attorney's office to negotiate a contract.
All right, you've heard the request. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
I was wondering if it would be appropriate to have Commissioner Gibbon and myself review the applicants to make sure they're qualified for that services.
All right, any thoughts on that?
I have no problem. I'm fine with that.
Do you want to do that first, before you award it?
I think that would be appropriate to do that before awarding the contract.
All right, can we, you want to rescind the motion, Joel?
So moved.
Thank you. And you're also good with rescinding the motion?
So moved.
All right, thank you. So we will, can we table that and move that to our next meeting, Sean?
I'll move to table, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Till the next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. All right, we'll circle back to item one. We have a second reading and public hearing.
This is a second reading and public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota rezoning the property legally described as east half, north half of the subdivision of north half, except lots H1 and H4. Section 6, Township 99 North, right 50 West, La Valley Township, from the C Commercial District to the PD Plan Development District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero.
Good morning. Toby Brown with County Planning. The applicant and property owner for this is LG Everest, Inc. Location is approximately one point, a little over one mile southwest of the nearest city limits of the city of Harrisburg. This is in the southeast quadrant of the Interstate 29 exit for the city of Harrisburg. Subject property, all 127, approximately acres of it, is currently Zone C Commercial. The subject property is currently vacant. There was a house, I believe, has been removed, and then there's been some agricultural structures that have been removed from the property. The applicant has submitted an application to, for a Plan Development District for this property. Specifically, there would be two sub-areas to this application. The first sub-area would primarily be along whatever called the north, northern part of the property, going down along the frontage of the interstate. This property would generally be used for commercial-type uses. Subarea B would be the primary development that's being proposed at this time. There would be a wet and a dry ready-mix plant on that proposed for that portion of the property. Staff has worked with the applicant to draft, as you're aware, this is a Plan Development District, so is not a conventional rezone application. So staff has worked with the applicant to draw up an ordinance specifically for this property. Again, the two sub-areas would be primarily, Subarea A would be commercial-type uses, which are identified in the ordinance just before you this morning. And then Subarea B would be primarily the wet and the dry ready-mix concrete plant. As was mentioned, the Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing. There really was no opposition at that public hearing to the application. The Planning Commission did have a number of questions related to primarily the access to the property, which will be off of a township road, which is adjacent to the east of the property. The applicant does have an agreement in place with La Valley Township, which is the road authority for that property. As you're aware, LG Everest did apply for Plan Development earlier this year for property directly north of this property. This property became available, so LG Everest purchased this property and decided to relocate that proposed operation and expansion to this property. So with that, we have to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? If not, is the applicant here?
Yes, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Guard Rops, Stockwell Engineers, 801 North Phillips Avenue. And here with LG Everest, and kind of will be the civil engineer for this project for them. As Toby had mentioned, Subarea B is kind of the area they're looking at developing here immediately. Subarea A is something that's going to be in the future. Down the road quite a ways, more than likely, when Harrisburg ends up getting utilities out there, sewer and water, and they'll look into, looking at some developers to come in and develop that property to the north. This has modified just a little bit. Subarea B will extend over closer to I-29, just due to the fact that we need some borrow out there to get the site to grade, so they'll be grabbing from this area right now to bring that site up to grade. And then over time, that will get filled in with material that they get from other projects. The site itself, from a utility standpoint, we have Lincoln County Rural Water, this is along 471st Avenue there. They're going to be tapping onto their existing 12-inch line that will come across, install a meter at the right-of-way. From that point, water will be extended up to the concrete plant, to the office, future office, and then the future asphalt plant. Sanitary sewer, you can see here in green, is also serve the services, the concrete plant, asphalt plant, and office, which comes to a septic tank that will then be gravity-fed over to a lift station and into a leach field down here in this green space. That'll be a pressurized mound system. Leach field. We'll also have some gravity sewer stubbed out to the east, so once sanitary sewer does come eventually along 471st Street, this system can get taken offline and everything will be gravity-fed into the city system. There is a detention pond that's going to be down here in the southwest corner. There's a number of little detention ponds, but ultimately everything drains to a retention pond here in this corner. There'll be a pump house with a pump that will use to pump this water out for uses, gray water, onto the site that will be used to feed the concrete plant, but then also numerous areas on-site for dust control, for wetting down stockpiles, and cleaning off pavements and that kind of, that kind of stuff. The storm sewer in red here just drains, is, we're going to drain the site, kind of, it's a relatively flat area. We'll be bringing that up to grade, but storm sewer goes throughout the site, stubs out to the north here to pick up any of that future development to the north. Those backlot lines can drain down and drain through the site as well, but will help facilitate drainage on the site itself. Everything kind of collects down into these ponds down here. These are ultimately connected together, too. That comes to this southwest pond to be utilized for that, to the retention pond for utilized water on-site. The site itself, like Toby had mentioned, there's two access points onto 471st Avenue. There's a north entrance and a south entrance. The north entrance will be the entrance into the site itself, and the exit will be down to the south, so the kind of the flow within the site will be at a clockwise position. There's an existing intersection right up here right now on that north side that that access point aligns up with, Fairfield Place, I believe it is. And then down here to the north, this weaves down here as far south as they could possibly get. Eventually, there'll be a road here right now in the future along that section line, but currently, right now, is just an existing driveway to the east. The existing, or the new concrete plant will be located right here. It will be a fully enclosed concrete, wet, dry plant, batch plant, has a conveyor that comes out to hoppers located just to the west. Those will also be completely enclosed. There's aggregate bins for the coarse and fine aggregates just to the west of that to feed those hoppers, and then some specialty aggregate bins right adjacent to that to the north. And then just to the west of that, concrete washout area for all the trucks that come back. They'll be washing out their concrete trucks right in this area. That is circulated through. The water is reused and recirculated through to reuse to wash out the concrete trucks, so no fresh water is going to be utilized there. The concrete plant is also going to be surrounded by, you can see here kind of in the light gray, is concrete pavement. That's going to extend all the way down south. This area right in here, which is kind of designated as asphalt, will be concrete as well at this point. The whole area in the, within the plants itself will be hard surface, so that's going to be concrete pavement. But then asphalt pavement will be utilized for the parking lot areas, one for the parking lot area for the, for the future office building that will follow the concrete plant. That'll be an office slash shop slash lab, and dispatch will be in there. And then the asphalt plant is just to the south, located right here, with their aggregate bins located just to the west of that. The, over to the very far west, this will be kind of just gravel surfacing out here. That's where the crushed concrete, crushed asphalt piles will be. That's not something that will happen all the time, but just whenever material becomes available, that will be crushing, stockpiled in these locations. They'll recycle as much as they possibly can on the site itself through the washout area. And also, there's with the concrete plant, there'll be a little washout, truck washout rack that the concrete trucks go through that will be drained to a pit that will discharge that water, settle out the settlements, and then that, the clean water will be topped off through the gravity system and go back to the pond. They can then clean out that bay with skid steer or whatever when that, when that gets to be, gets to the point where they need to clean that out. That will also be then stacked piled over here, dried up, and then crushed eventually. So everything on-site will try to recycle as much as possible. You can see down here, there's kind of some dead areas in the white. Those are some wetlands. The, this whole site has been delineated. The wetlands have been delineated on-site and determined to be jurisdictional, so currently in the process right now through the Corps to get those mitigated. So trying to avoid those as much as possible. Where the ponds are shown right now, those are currently not identified as wetland areas currently. And so we're working through that with the Corps right now and getting that determined. In the meantime, work will, will start here. Grading will start, and we'll avoid those until we get that mitigation taken care of. The site itself, like I had mentioned, will be all self-contained from a drainage standpoint. Currently, the site kind of drains in multiple different areas. Down here in the south areas is the area we're looking at right now. There's a couple of different areas that drain off-site. Basin F, I believe, here goes off to the east, crosses 471st and continues off to the east. These three basins down to the south, all drain to the south to a larger wetland located along the entire south end of the property. We, again, are going to be now taking these at once drained off-site. We'll be collecting those on-site and maintaining that in the, in the new retention pond. The site itself will also be bermed up with a kind of a six-to-eight-foot landscape berm along this north side, along the west side, and the east side. And there'll be a little bit of a berm kind of on that south side, but kind of the wetland area kind of buffers that area. So just to kind of keep a distance away from the north and the east and the west, and kind of hide their operations a little bit, but then also kind of beautifying that as much as they possibly can. That's what they're proposing to do in those locations, with gates located on both entrances on the north and, and south sides. There is a scale on the very bottom end down here. When trucks leave, that's where they'll scale out before they take off. So like Toby had mentioned, Township of, La Valley Township is one that currently maintains 471st Street. LG Everest has been in contact with them. They do have an agreement set in place, too, for maintenance on that road for the added truck traffic that they, that they're going to be seeing out here from it. We're also going to be doing a, they're in, LG's in contact with, with a traffic engineer, too, to put together kind of a traffic study on this and the impacts that this will have. That was something part of the road agreement that was going to take place, so that is currently under, under contract, and they're working on that right now as well. But with that, I guess, if you have any questions?
Do any Commissioners have any questions?
With regard to the traffic study, where are you at on that?
Lance, I believe they just got contracted to start on that, correct?
We're in proposal.
In proposal, okay.
Are you proposing to insert a turning lane there, onto your property?
Onto the property on, along 471st?
No, on 273rd. Or will there not be a need for it?
It will depend on what that traffic study comes up and says.
You know, recently, we, Landscape Lawn and Garden Centers, recently, there was some kind of traffic accident there. There's been some complaints from them, and we had to slow down the speed limit there because of that and some other issues. And kind of what I'm wondering here, I know it's a different road, but it's kind of the same concept, is these roads are getting busier now, and I'm kind of wondering if we don't need to include turning lanes here in order to take it, take into consideration the increased traffic. So I guess what I'm hearing from you is you want us to approve this, but you are going to do a traffic study, and then you may or may not, depending upon the results of the traffic study, insert a turning lane there on your own?
Potentially, yes. And I know that the DOT is also, they're doing that systems interchange currently at the Highway 110 and I-29 interchange. That's something that's going to be getting shifted over. They don't know exactly what the options they're going with there is at this point. That will extend east a little ways, too. Not, I don't think, all the way to the intersection of 471st, but we'd have to kind of work with them as well on that.
Well, I'm kind of thinking that maybe we've failed to take into consideration making some of these businesses put in turning lanes on these busier roads. And what I'm wondering is, is I suppose before the study comes in, you don't want to commit to having to build a turning lane, do you?
Correct.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
Madam Chair, I do have one other question.
Go ahead.
With regard to the township, you do have an agreement in place with the township, so they've signed off on this already?
Yes, correct. My name is Lance Pullman. I'm with LG Everest, 350 South Main Avenue in Sioux Falls. As far as the township agreement, yes, we do have a road use agreement signed and executed. As far as your turning lane question, I'd like to address that. Currently, our traffic is a couple blocks to the west. Our traffic patterns are essentially going to shift to this intersection. As far as increase in traffic and so forth, I don't foresee the corridor traffic increasing. I more so see it shifting to this intersection. And as far as the traffic study, we're more or less doing that as a baseline to determine what the existing conditions are versus what the impact of the additional traffic might be.
Yeah, I think, I don't think you guys are going to increase traffic out there. I think society is.
Agreed.
Right? I mean, the number of trucks you probably, and traffic you're going to bring in is probably just going to be steady state based upon your operations. What I'm worried about is the fact that society is growing up around us, right? And when you mix in the increase with increased population and traffic, along with all the big, heavy truck traffic, you kind of create a situation there. It's kind of the perfect storm. And so if I understand this right, you're going to be shifting all of that, most of your traffic to the intersection of 471st and 273rd?
Correct.
Okay.
Which is currently on Iron Works, which is connecting onto Highway 110 as well, 273rd as well, closer to the interstate there.
Yeah.
That was one of the other concerns that they had with the DOT doing that systems interchange. That intersection that connects onto 110 potentially is going to go away. They're going to shift that over to Kenworth, which is another block over to the east, so.
Understood, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, thank you. You guys can have a seat. And is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Anyone here to speak opposed? If not, any discussion amongst the Commissioners?
I'd move for approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I had one question for Toby. Toby, will this reclassification affect any other businesses in the area?
You mean the application-wise?
Yes.
No.
I mean that it's, that you're now going from commercial to Plan Development?
No. No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I don't have any problem with the application, but I think as part of the application, we need to require a turning lane to be installed there. We've got our roads getting chewed up. This is going to be some heavy truck traffic. I appreciate the fact that the applicants are doing business out here, but it wouldn't be out of the ordinary. We did this for the Lenox Auto Auction people, and they have, you know, they just run truck traffic in there as well. But I think it would be in line, given the truck traffic, as well as increased traffic on that highway that's going to happen from now and into the future, to have turning lanes installed there. I mean, we just lowered the speed limit on 271st because of people pulling into, people pulling into Landscape Lawn and Garden Center. And I'm concerned that in the future, we need to forecast out into the future. And so if we want these folks doing business here, we got to plan for the future, and I think that means putting a turning lane in. So I'm going to move to amend the motion on the floor, and I think we need to require installation of turning lanes there.
This is a rezone? I don't think we can put conditions on a rezone.
So the only comment I have is it's not our road. It's a township road. We can't require that there be a turning lane put out there.
Well, 273rd's a county highway, right?
Correct.
And they're going to be turning off of 273rd, right?
So you're saying off of 273rd?
Correct.
Okay. Well, again, so a rezone by state statute, we can't put a condition on it. Terry would have to have a driveway permit or an access permit that that would be part of the condition of that, potentially? But I'll have to talk to Bill and Terry on that.
Terry, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, so I guess if they're going to be doing a traffic impact study, if they're encompassing 273rd Street and 471st, that intersection, I guess I would be, I would say that if it, if the warrants call for turn lanes, then they would need to install turn lanes.
Correct.
On 273rd. And I understand that they're just moving, moving their traffic to the east. I get that. But again, I think there's going to have to be coordination with the DOT, especially going, going west of 471st, because some of the, some of the plans, preliminary stuff they have as far as options, take it all the way over to 471st when they do that interchange. So there, there may have to be some coordination with DOT and them, and as far as timing and when the, when these turn lanes come in. Because I'm not sure, you know, DOT doesn't have anything except for that interchange, probably 28 is the earliest. And I guess, I don't know when these guys are going to be going in, but, so I guess that would be my comment. If they're going to do, if they're doing an impact study, then they would have to follow the warrant, if it's warranted, turn lanes out on the county road, then they would need to install them, so.
Thank you, Terry. Got a motion and a second to approve. I've got a motion to amend. Is there a second on the motion to amend? If not, motion fails. We'll go with the original motion. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes, but I hope they look at inserting a turning lane there based on the results of the traffic study.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
I'm abstaining. Thank you. Move on to item two on the agenda. We have a second reading and public hearing.
Second reading and public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as Olson's Track Number One, except lots H1 and H2, northeast quarter, northwest quarter, Section 19, Township 98 North, right 50 West, Lynn Township, from the C Commercial District to the I-1 Light Industrial District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero.
Good morning. Toby Brown from County Planning. So this applicant and owner, a property owner is Avery Zahn. Location, this is northwest quadrant of the Interstate 29 exit for, or the Canton exit. The subject property size is approximately 4.69 acres. As you can see, the property is currently Zone C Commercial. It has been utilized as C Commercial for a number of years. Various conditional use permits have been applied for and approved for the property. Currently, the property is developed with a number of buildings on the property that were primarily utilized for auto sales, auto repair type operations. The applicant has submitted an application to rezone this property to I-1 Light Industrial. The applicant has identified a project or
The applicant has identified a project or a proposal for a business that would involve recycling materials and depots and other types of end-use products. And I'll let the applicant get more involved in that part of the discussion. But the proposed property is identified as a rural commercial industrial area on the land use for the comprehensive plan. So this application is consistent with the comprehensive plan as far as goals, policies, and the land use plan. As was mentioned, the Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing. There really was no opposition to this application at that public hearing. And at this time, there is no proposal to change access or development into the property, or access onto the property at this time. With that, we have to answer your questions that you have for staff at this time.
Anybody have any questions for Toby?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant present?
Avery Zahn, 28054 472nd Avenue, Worthing, South Dakota.
You want to just tell us a little about what you're doing, Avery?
So, what we're looking for on the rezone is we're looking at having a recycling facility where we take in trash plastic. We grind up plastic, any type of waste, generator plastic, and we create end-user products like this, which would be a fence post. We'll do construction lumber, two-by-fours, two-by-sixes, two-by-eights. And again, we're purely looking at teaming up with municipalities, counties in the region. We're in Iowa right now, currently, and Alabama. And my hometown is Worthing, South Dakota. So we're looking at putting a facility here. And this currently is our R&amp;D in this building right now, and we're looking to have this as a production facility in the future.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Avery?
You turn it into, you said fence posts?
Yeah. Yep, so like, this would be a, right there is a round fence post. So that is 99.9% trash plastic.
I don't know where that's coming from.
Is that a video game or what?
Yeah, evidently.
Like a big hockey puck.
All right, anybody have any questions for the applicant about the rezone?
Good deal.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody else here to speak in favor of the application for rezone? Anybody opposed? All right, consider a motion?
I'll still move, Madam Chair.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Gibbon?
Second.
All right, I have a second to approve. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins? Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. And then we are going to handle item three on our agenda. We have Canton Chamber of Commerce.
Hi there, Madam Chair, County Commission. Jeff Tanner, Canton Chamber of Commerce, Canton Economic Development Corp., here on behalf of the chamber today. Had an opportunity, was approached here with the chamber by a gentleman by the name of Dave Rinley approximately six months ago. If, for those of you who may or may not know Dave, Dave's a very passionate guy. And one of the things he's very passionate about is history, and specifically Civil War history. And so that's part of why I'm here before you today, is to, to make a request of the County Commission, show of support, if you will. Let me start off by showing just a real brief video that's going to be airing on the Dakota News Now affiliates. We have volume here, let's see.
You do.
Okay. Oops. I don't get the steer, I guess, so, excuse me. Something real fainting up here. Well, maybe we'll, maybe we'll figure that out, but. So as I, as I had mentioned, we were approached by Mr. Rinley here about six months ago, and he had asked us what our interest would be in taking Canton back in time. And he reminded me that many of the homesteaders, the businessmen, the legislators, who shaped Lincoln County War, in fact, Civil War veterans. And so with that, and with this having certainly an educational component, and kind of that preservation of history, both good and bad for the purposes of learning from it, we decided to form a committee, a Civil War Days Committee, and to pursue Dave's interest in replacing what used to happen most closely to us in Pipestone, Minnesota. And the reason Pipestone kind of, there's kind of fell by the wayside is simply because COVID hit, and with that, the lack of interest, I guess, perhaps in the event, or maybe they just were tired of coordinating. I've kind of heard more of a lack of interest in continuing to coordinate. And I can speak firsthand that it's a, it's a bearcat in terms of the coordination that goes into such a, organizing such an event, and so on and so forth. So, that's why I'm here before you today, is just to say, hey, you know, this is a huge thing for, for Lincoln County. I can tell you our ad buy that I attempted to show you there is going to reach 552,000 households. It started yesterday and will continue up to the event, the day of the event. So we suspect we had a chance to kind of go see one of these firsthand down in Carthage, Missouri, and they have a little bit more experience than we do in putting these and holding these events. And there, I can tell you that it rained about four inches the night before the event and during the event. And so me and my fiance, when we get there, we're thinking, oh, we're going to have one of just a few people there. And that first day, this is how passionate folks are about this, 1,600 spectators showed up to watch this event. And then the next day, which we had to leave, we weren't able to attend, there was another 3,000 spectators. So they had just under 5,000 spectators there over the two days of the, of the event. And I don't know if we are able to pull up kind of the calendar of events here real quick. I promised Madam Chair that we'd keep this under five minutes. I'm struggling with that right now, but. It's the dot cam, I guess, maybe that is.
Yes.
Okay. So this is kind of the flyer we put together for the event, thank you, for the event. And you can see it's over two days. There's a lot of similarities in the two days. I can tell you, tell you that both days will have actual, they'll have vignettes from actual battles that took place during the Civil War. So we tried to keep this as historically accurate as possible. We've also coordinated with the South Dakota Army National Guard, as well as the South Dakota Air National Guard. And we're looking to kind of, more so, if this continues, we'd like to make this a biannual event in an attempt to bring back not only this, and then the off-year, run this with the Canton Car Show, because there's a real movement to, to bring that back. But if this goes well, that's, that's the intent with that. Of course, it's always a little bit more harding, harder with funding those first, that first time doing anything in terms of getting things going. But due to an anonymous donor coming forward, and other generous individuals, we've been able to raise a good portion of the funds that were needed to, to be able to host the event. And then we're just hopeful for a good turnout and good weather to make the rest of this, to move forward, to push, push it forward. So, I could go on about this for literally, probably, well, longer than you'd care to be here this morning. So, that being said, if I may, I'll invite any questions of the, the County Commission, and, you know, and then I'll try to keep my responses limited.
Jeff, what specifically, in your request, what would you think you would break it down to use those funds for?
Very, very good question. So, a lot of it is going to be for the, so right now, we have in-kind contribution from the City of Canton, public safety, and so on and so forth. And the intentions with those funds would be for the financial side of that, that's not being kept up. So whether that be with porta potty units, there's an expense with that. But things that relate into the, the public safety, public, more of the public aspect of that, we gladly give a report back to the County Commission on the expending of those funds, if that's something that the, the County Commission would like. And our, our ask, just to get that out, is, is not, you know, it's relatively, it's, we're asking for $2,500 is what we're asking for, request for funds. So, and with the City of Canton, they've, they've given at least that. I can't concretize that for you right now in terms of their in-kind contribution with staffing and so on and so forth for the event. From a public safety aspect, too, I just want you to know that our Chief of Police with the City of Canton's been in contact with Sheriff's Office as well. So they're coordinating for that, traffic control, et cetera, et cetera, for the event. One question, maybe, how many spectators are going to show up for this thing? And we really have no idea. Like I said, Carthage drew 5,000. This ad buy is going to reach 552,000 people. If even a half a percent of those were enticed to come because of that ad buy, you're, you know, you guys know numbers, those, those numbers are significant, so.
Jeff, thanks for bringing us this forward. I've been to one of these before. I think it was back in 2003 when I was doing some army duty down in Fort Benning, Georgia. They love their Civil War reenactments down there, I can tell you that. For maybe a variety of different cultural reasons, perhaps. But I think you'll do just fine here. I've seen those crowds at that one. It was big at the time. That probably had a longer-standing tradition down there. But these things turn out to be fantastic. And I think the best part about them is when the kids get to do the walkthroughs. And then typically, what I've discovered is that the reenactors like to, the good ones, give the history lessons to the people who are walking through. So that's just fantastic that this is going on. You know, just from seeing these in the past, I've got no doubt that you're going to be successful with it.
Awesome, I appreciate that vote of confidence. We are very cautiously optimistic ourselves is. If there's such a thing as being too successful, Commissioner, we're also trying to prepare for too much success as well. And that's where the public safety aspect comes in, and so on and so forth, so. Appreciate that very much. And the last thing, if I can just say one more thing with the commission is, we have over 100 Civil War veterans buried in cemeteries throughout Lincoln County. And I believe there's over 80 in Forest Hill alone. So, it's a significant thing in, in Lincoln County. And we just need to remind ourselves that this area was, I mean, a lot of the, the, Lincoln County, for example, the name, the township names, and so on and so forth, these were Union veterans that decided to settle South Dakota when it was still just a territory. So, there's definitely a rich history in, in Lincoln County and in the state of South Dakota for, for the, for the Civil War. So, with that, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. I know, this isn't, it doesn't look like this is on our agenda for board action. Does the commission want to see this on our agenda for board action?
Yeah, I think I would in another week, maybe.
Okay, Sean, can you put this on next week?
Yes, ma'am.
For action? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to take things a little out of order, just because there's a couple of things that I need to be here for, and I've got to leave for court in Sioux Falls, I'm here at about 10:15. So, can we go and do our executive session, Bill? Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I'll move, Madam Chair.
That's on item five on our agenda. Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins? Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commiss, Commissioner Poppins? Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. All right, we'll move on to item 15 on our agenda. Sure, you want to come up, talk about the budget?
I don't. I'll sit here and talk about it.
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, so there, there are some items on the agenda that we need to discuss before we do the provisional budget, but I guess we can always just add them on the public hearing. I did receive a request from DecoTilities and the Link. DecoTilities sent in a request for 4320, which would, if you look at this sheet here, it would lower their request from the 59, whatever it is, 5684 to 4320. And then the Link sent in a request for 25,000. And I think right now, we have 15,000, so.
What did we, on the Link, what, did we give, we gave them a three-year commitment, did we not?
Nothing official.
Okay.
Somebody had conversation about it, but there was nothing in any minutes. We couldn't find it, he couldn't find it, so we had nothing official.
What did we do, was it 10,000 or 15,000?
Last year?
Yeah.
We did 19,739. And basically, we did that because it was, you guys said, let's do 86,000, and that's how we got to that 739 number.
On the, the Link?
Yeah.
So, you know, when we were talking about this before, we wanted to kind of quantify what we were getting for services from that facility. Have we been provided with anything like that?
I have not.
I, I don't think they're providing services to Lincoln County, so I guess I'm fine with taking that out completely, but.
Well, I don't know if not providing services to Lincoln County is a complete fair statement, but.
Okay, I don't, I don't know the answer. I wanted it quantified on.
Right.
Well, they were asked at a meeting, how many Lincoln County citizens would be served. I asked the mayor when he came here. All they had to do was pull down the police reports, which the city has access to, and nobody wanted to provide anything.
Last year, you mean?
Well, whenever they came in. And now, all they have to do is go through their records and tell us the county of residency for the people they serve.
Right, well, and I, and I think it's an unfair disadvantage to these folks that we don't have a better way of taking in their requests, vetting them, instead of just getting a letter from them. So going back to what I wanted to do in '21 is start the process of outdoor, outside request a little earlier, have them send in information, come in and talk to you, rather than just being like, hey, here's my letter, here's what I want. So I think that I still want to do that, as, if long as the commission is supportive of it.
Sure. Well, that makes sense to me, I guess.
Yeah. So, I mean, at this time, we can always have him come in before the hearing. I mean, and nothing's official until we go through the final hearing.
Okay. So, just, so the public's aware, can you explain what this provisional budget and the publication requirement, what are we, what are we doing here today?
So the provisional budget is just basically saying, here's the numbers of what the departments came up with, what, what they need to operate. We have to then publish it for two weeks, and then we would have a hearing. At that hearing date, we would go through it, you can find tooth comb it, and then any changes, we would have to put, advertise again. It's not the final budget, it's just the starting point, I guess.
Okay, so it's not us saying we approve or disapprove of any one thing? It's just following the requirement that we publish?
Yep, the only thing that we're really doing today on the provisional budget is authorizing us to advertise it.
Okay.
There's no, it's not setting any numbers, it's not saying this is what you're approving, it's not. There's no, it's not setting any numbers. It's not saying this is what you're approving. It's not anything.
All right. So with that, is there a motion to approve the 2023 provisional budget?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
This is a, this should be a motion to approve advertising. We're not approving the budget itself, right?
Correct. You have to request an action as approve the provisional budget for 2023 for advertising.
My motion would be to approve the advertising of our provisional budget for 20, 2022.
2020.
I'll clarify my second.
Yep.
All right, so I have a motion by Schmidt, seconds by Poppins. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
So why don't we circle back right before, I have to leave it here in 15 minutes, but Commissioner Aaron, so when I leave, let's handle item four on our agenda about the WIC increased days. And then we should be back on track to start back up with item seven on the written agenda.
Sherry, if I, if I might on that item?
Yeah, go ahead.
I know that it was Commissioner Schmidt and Commissioner Aaron's item. I did do some research after, we wanted to put it back on there. I talked to the folks from the WIC department. They are here. Paula's here. After the board approved the moving to three days, they did go out and they hired the nurse and they did marketing to have it. There was a misconception on how the payments were going to happen. Did you want to speak on that, Paula, or did you want me to continue on that? Okay, so.
What's the page on the budget sheet first, in the budget book for this?
I have no idea.
I don't either.
It's.
Is it page 30, WIC?
Yep. So, so what happens with the payments? And the misconception I had is that you wouldn't be able to change the agreement. But what happens is like, right now we are reimbursed, they've got an agreement to reimburse us at $8,000. So if our petition, participation levels go up next month, then our payment goes up next month until we get close to the $8,000. Once we get close to the $8,000, they do an amendment to give us more money because we've got more participation. So instead of what I was thinking last time we had the discussion is that we wouldn't get an increase in the payment, it does get increased as we go along. And then if the money gets tapped out, then we do an amendment to get additional funding for it. So it is by participation by month, and it's adjusted every month based on the participation numbers. And Paula is here, if you have any questions regarding that.
Who does the additional funding come from?
It's a state funded.
So do we end up getting a dollar-for-dollar match on this or not?
It's not dollar-for-dollar.
I'm Paula Mizurek, Department of Health. It's $6.16 per participant. So as the participant, you know, increases, then that payment to you increases. Right now, the average monthly payment has been about $451 a month from the department.
What was that last figure?
451 for the la, that's been the average payment monthly. But you'll be getting $6.16 per participant.
So if, if I'm just John Q taxpayer here and I'm saying, you know, hey, I'm gonna, we're going to spend $11,000 on personal services here in the next year, and then we got to spend 5,000 on the WIC. That's a total of, no, excuse me, our revenue is 5,000 projected for 2023, and our projected expenses are 11,000. How do I reconcile that?
Well, it's to, you know, right now, the number of folks that are leaving your county for this very service is greater than the number that are staying put. And so, you know, hopefully by making it easier for your constituents to be, you know, getting their services here in the county would be a benefit to them. The other thing that the state is looking at is having a WIC mobile van. And it's actually being piloted in other areas of the state. And we were thinking that, you know, using it in Lincoln County would be a real benefit as well. But for right now, it's, you know, just, you know, to serve more folks in your county instead of having your folks drive out of the county for their services.
Isn't the reason though that these people probably drive out of the county is because it's more convenient for them? I mean, to a certain extent, it's almost like presuming that hiring someone to be here more hours is going to socially re-engineer how people drive and their traffic patterns. I mean, for the most part, if I live up in northern Sioux Falls and I need these services, it's easier for me to just drive to a service center in Sioux Falls.
Yeah.
I.e. out of my county into Minnehaha. Or if you live in the southern end of the county, isn't it just easier? So isn't kind of the presumption that people are leaving the county, to a certain degree, that's just because it's more convenient for them to leave the county, right?
There are probably some individuals that that may be the case. But when you're only offering a service one day a week, you know, that really limits what folks can do too. We're also looking at, you know, extending our hours, being flat, you know, finding the day that, you know, the days that work well for them to help. I think the other thing is, is when you have, you know, this, the nurse that we hired is actually done home health in Canton before. And, you know, we expect that person to do a lot of marketing, to really go out and let folks know that this service is here. It's here more frequently. I think about, you know, back in the day when I was a public health nurse, brand new. And I started in Bonham County, and the, and the caseload in Bonham at that time was 60. And actually, I didn't have a lot of idea what public health nurses did. And I remember telling my manager, I said, this is such a great program. I, I think we can get more. And she's like, oh. And I said, I think I can get it to 100. And she said, oh, Paula, are you realistic? And I said, I think it's there. And I ma, I taught prenatal classes. I made postpartum home visits. I approached people in the grocery stores and at daycares. And we got that caseload over 200. And it has not dropped below 100 in that time. And Bonham County is a little county with a lot of proud folks who say, I don't want to, I don't want to do welfare. But when they find out the benefits to this program, they, they will come.
So.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Sherry.
To your point, we had a phone conversation the other day, and there was, there's a, and correct me if I'm wrong, 755 potential people that would be participating in the WIC program. Of that, 193 of them are in the 57108 zip code. So we would still have quite a few people that could participate in it. Right now, they're driving to Union and Clay.
Yeah, some, yeah. Or to Sioux Falls.
Or to Sioux Falls.
Yeah.
Yeah, and my assumption is it's easier for them to do that, or it's on their way, or they build that into their life, or they go get groceries up there. I mean, at $6.16 per participant, that's 974 people you would need to, just to recover the increased cost. So, I mean, the increased costs aren't even recovered by, we don't even have a number of people eligible in order to recover the increased cost.
The other thing that, you know, they've, WIC is probably one of the, you know, best federal programs out there. They, the studies show that for every dollar spent on WIC, $4 are saved in other services. We do more than WIC. And I think the, the, you know, having a nurse here three days a week, I always say that the relationship they develop with their, you know, clients is probably more important than the, than the things that we give them. I think we, it's, it's just a real special thing. And I think it's something, you know, I think about Bonhom County. You know, they, they're, we're open four days a week, and we don't even have half of the potential eligibles as you folks do, you know, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on that item? I know it's on the agenda to take action on it. Is there somebody that wants to make a motion?
Was the nurse already hired?
Yes.
When did the hiring take place?
I think we interviewed her last month, and she will start August 9.
She, she was hired after you guys approved to increase the days.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, there'll be, there'll be a few weeks of training, and so she'll be in Sioux Falls initially. But we'll gradually get her here and, and doing more.
Yeah.
So her full-time duty station will be here?
She'll be here three days a week and, and.
Right.
In Sioux Falls too.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. If there's nobody who wants to make a motion, then we'll go with what we originally unanimously voted on. And thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Terry, you want to come up?
First item I have on the agenda for you is approval of federal, federal grant applications and resolutions. I know I spoke to you before about some of the, the federal grants through, through the feds, through Federal Highway. These are not this. This is, this is a federal grant program through the South Dakota DOT. All right? So what we have here is I have seven structures. And again, the DOT changed, the South Dakota DOT changed a little bit the criteria on which bridges are eligible. They got to be in poor condition, yes. But one thing this year is they have to be on, on roads classified as local roads, which pretty much takes anything that's on a county road out of the equation. So these are all on township roads. The cost share, the cost match on these, for this program is going to be 100%. They're, they're covering 100% of this cost. So there will be no cost to us. And one other thing to note is the, the amount of the, the state federal program here is less money than it has been in the last few years. So basically what I did is I took, took our worst bridges that are in poor condition, that are on local roads, and I'm applying for them. And I guess we'll see what happens. So.
All right.
You want me to, Sean, do you want me to go through and list all these bridge numbers?
Would you like this resolution read? Madam Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
Whereas Lincoln County wishes to submit an application for consideration of award for the Bridge Improvement Grant and/or local federal bridge programs. Structure numbers and locations are 42015180, which is seven miles south and .5 mile west of Lenox. 42023130, which is two miles south and .3 miles east of Lenox. 42034270, two miles north and 3.6 miles west of Beersford. 42040187, 7.7 miles south and two, two miles east of Lenox. 42070195 is one mile west and seven and a half miles south of Worthing. 42140278, six miles east and 1.2 miles north of Beersford. 42144270, 6.4 miles east and two miles north of Beersford. And whereas Lincoln County certifies that the projects are listed in the county's five-year highway, that's not applicable. And whereas Lincoln County agrees to pay the non-applicable match on the Bridge Improvement Grant funds, 0%. And whereas Lincoln County hereby authorize the Bridge Improvement Grant and local federal bridge applications and any required funding commitments. Now therefore be resolved that the South Dakota Department of Transportation be and hereby is requested to accept the attached Bridge Improvement Grant and/or local federal bridge applications.
Thank you. I've heard the request. Is there a motion?
So moved. Go ahead.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins? Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll move on to item eight. And Commissioner Aaron's, I'll turn the chair over to you.
Go ahead, Terry.
Next item I have is approve federal P slash P grant applications and resolutions. Again, this is through the South Dakota DOT. The PE grant is going to be preliminary engineering, and that's part of the bridge, bridge improvement granting that the state has as a pro, program for us. So on these two structures, these are the, this is the one road that we have bridges on. That's a county road. It's a gravel road that I have a couple of bad structures on. So first of all, it's going to go to the federal side. And if it does not get granted through the federal grant, then it's going to fall back into the big program, which is the preliminary engineering grant. Hope that makes sense. So, and again, I have two structures listed on that one.
Does anybody have any other questions for Terry?
So you said if it doesn't qualify, federal, it goes back to where?
The, the PE, it goes back into the Bridge Improvement Grant, which is the state program. And basically, this is going to be for preliminary engineering. So, so if these two get awarded on the federal side, they'll be 100%. But if not, then it's going to be on the PE side, which is going to be 20%. So I know it's, the, the state took and kind of meshed together their two grant applications for this. So they didn't have to have multiple grant applications. So that, that's why it may sound a little bit confusing.
Do we need to read those for the record as well?
If you want to. There's only two structures on there, right?
Correct. Structure 42200226 and structure 42200249. The only other difference is the potential for a 20% match.
Is there a motion?
I so moved. Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing non-clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins? Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Next item I have, these are two structures. We're going to be applying for preliminary engineering grant. So this is the application of resolutions for those. So this here is getting through the big programs. This is through the, the state program, grant program. So they have dumped a lot more money into this, this program, the state did. A lot of this was federal dollars that came down. Again, we're going for preliminary engineering. These two structures are located on County Road 125. One is about a mile and three quarters south of 18, and the other one is about half a mile or three quarters mile north of Highway 46. Structure numbers are 42-120-158 and 42-120-283. And again, these are going to be a 20% cost share if we get them.
Are there any other questions for Terry? Is there a motion?
Chair, I so moved. Second.
Got a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing non-clerk call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins? Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Last item I have for you, again, this is going to be under the Weed Department. We are looking to purchase a spray tank. It's a 2,600 gallon spray tank from Benco. So what we're going to do is, you know, several years ago, we had outfitted one of our, the old county dump trucks. We had an old tank sitting around. We used that for, and he set it up so we could go spray ditches with that. Again, this is a huge time saver for us to do. So on the highway side, one of the older trucks that we had, we were running this spring. We had some issues hauling gravel, and, and we, we need to remove the box off of that. So basically what we're going to do is we're going to purchase this tank, which is a little larger than the other one we're using now. We're going to mount this directly on the frame of the truck. He's going to set up this other truck to use for spraying. And then we'll, the one that he's currently using, we'll take and surplus that and sell it.
What's wrong with the one we're using right now?
He's going to have to do some repairs on it, the truck itself. The chassis on the one that we're going to be using is, is a better chassis, has less miles on it. So like I said, in, in the one that we're using now, it's got the box on it yet, and we're going to have to do some, some framework on that box because this thing is rusted out pretty good. The truck, I believe, they're 2004s, I believe. The one that we're going to get from the highway side, again, so we had a lot of rust on the pivot points in the back, and it. And it buckled when we were trying to haul gravel with it, so the boxes, and we can't repair it. It's, there's too much rust to it, so.
Is there anything wrong with the tank, though?
The tank that's in the truck now, the one we're using? No, this, this one here is actually gonna be a spray tank. So if we're gonna mount it directly on the, on the frame of the truck, it's gonna drain out better. This one, this one, I think our other one is only like 1,600 gallons, maybe, something like that, 1,800 gallons. So this is gonna be a larger tank.
You'll be able to spray for a long time.
Yeah, so, so that's what he's noticed when he set this other truck up, that we can go out and, you know, typically when they just use the pickup ones, they're coming back five times during the day to load up. Well, this here, they can go out and run three times the acreage and.
They can get a lot done.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
I would move for approval. Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We're on to agenda item number 12, discussion of board action regarding Lincoln County 4-H leader proposal to hay land south of T in 2023. That's Commissioner Poppins. Is he on the phone with us yet?
I don't think he's on the phone, but there is a correction for that. It needs to be for the 2022 year.
Okay.
And it's gonna be for the areas that are not MCRP. It would be for the south half of that land over by T.
Do we need to wait for him to get on the phone, or can we deal with this without him?
Do you want any additional explanation, or?
If you have any. I don't know if you have any, or if he needs to.
What about, Sean, what, what was the conversation you had with him?
The conversation in the request was that the 4-H leaders would then hay it, bail it, remove that hay, and use it for 4-H activities. And if there's a surplus, they would then sell that hay to help fund 4-H activities.
I think we can move on that. This is CRP ground, correct?
There's only a small portion of it that has been CRP, and they, they would have the map and they'd stay away from it. There's actually, I don't know how many acres for sure that would be out of it, but they would know where the CRP is.
Don't want to get in trouble with the.
Yeah, because it's basically right in the RBE.
Okay.
So they, I don't think they would hay down in there anyway.
Was there a motion?
I would so moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and second to allow the 4-H leaders to hay the land, and they'll do all the work, and then they will sell it. And then any remainder will go to the 4-H program, correct? Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Approve second quarter adjustments to the 2022 budget.
Okay, so I have two items on here. The first one, and we'll do them with separate resolutions. The first one is to move the budgeted cash from the general fund to the emergency management fund in the amount of $30,364. And basically, we're waiting on the money from, that the state pays us for the other half, but we would still have to fund it regardless, so.
Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and second to move $30,000 from the general fund to the emergency management budget. And then in anticipation of state repayment, that's just gonna come late or after the fact. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
The second one is to write the checks from the Domestic Abuse Fund in the amount of $10,000 with, or I'm sorry, $8,400 with $3780 going to Children's Inn, $3780 going to the Compass Center, and $840 being retained by Lincoln County for administrative fees.
Is there a motion to that effect?
You're on, excuse me, you're on item which one, Commissioner?
It's still part of my second quarter.
It's still part of the second quarter.
Page 34.
Okay, thank you.
33 or 34, 35. We need a motion, Jim, you want to make that, or do you want me to?
Okay. We do still need a motion, yes.
I would so move, Mr. Chair. I'll second.
Got a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Board action in accounting for highway permits.
So currently, we account for the highway permits under the general fund. It's about a revenue of 20-ish thousand dollars is what we budgeted for it. What I'd like to do with the 2023 budget, and I do have it already set up that way in the provisional budget, is to record the funds for the highway permits under the 201431132900. I just need the resolution to be able to put the money there instead of where we put it currently in the general fund. This is just a way to help the highway budget become more self-sufficient.
Currently, we're putting them where?
Currently, we put it into the general fund.
So we move it from the general fund to the highway budget?
Correct. Which I, I feel that it should be there, because the highway permits is basically the, this one that we, that we account for in the general fund, it's the utilities that run in the right of ways. So whenever anybody wants to put in a utility, we put it in the general fund. Well, then we end up transferring the highway fund a bunch of money anyway, so. And the permits and everything all go through the highway department, so I think they should have the money.
Terry Floyd was aware of this, or?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Okay. I'll so move.
Second.
Got a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
We have anything outstanding on here, or any alibis? I don't think so. Did we miss anything?
It looks like we covered everything.
Do we have a need for any additional executive session? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second, Chair.
Got a motion and second to adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you.